Recording in progress.
Good evening, everyone. It's Thursday, February 22 at 6:04 PM, and I'm calling the special meeting of the Board of Education to order. The first item is information regarding the town's annual audit. It has come to our attention from the town's auditors that there were about four items that they needed more information on, and Dave and his team have been working around the clock to ensure that those items are taken care of. My understanding is there's one left, and that should be done in about a week or so. Additionally, the auditors are requiring us to accrue certain checks from 2024 back to 2023 and transfer the amounts to a DOD supplemental. I think your audio is on.
Yep.
I know, I'm trying to turn it off.
You just have to move the computer. Let you do it.
Okay, good.
See if you get the echo.
Okay. All right, very good. So I sat in with the meeting yesterday with the auditors. It's still feedback.
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
And they made their recommendations, and the town manager is studying the issue and seeing how we can make those accruals.
I think Dave talked to him today, so we're working through it.
Oh, yeah, it's ongoing. I think we're down to literally four grants. We're about a half an item away. We're pretty close.
So to that end, can we just recap the timeline of the situation, like what occurred?
The auditors for the town, I don't know the exact timeline. They come in after June 30, and they start their audit, and they request the information from the town and the board that they need to complete it. Dave started in, I think, September, and so he was tasked with providing those items.
And there was, I think there was a dozen at first, and we worked away and chipped away at them, and then these other ones must have come up. And so we followed through when we were notified to, you know, make sure that that is happening. And they're giving the answers to.
And when did the previous financial director leave?
Yeah.
Early July?
Yeah, he was transitioning end of June to the first week in July, I think.
And there is no plan in place to bridge the gap as far as getting, make sure the town got the information it needed?
No, we didn't know about it at that time. The audit didn't happen until the fall. So there was not, there was nothing.
The audit happens every year, though.
Yeah, but I'm just saying there was no questions being asked until Dave got here about what was needed.
Are there going to be any penalties attached to this, the lateness of the submission?
The auditor did not mention any penalties.
I think there's still some time, but we do want to make it really efficient. That's why we're saying we're looking into, you know, just trying to wrap it up next week early.
They have until June 30 of this year to submit the final audit.
Well, along the lines of audits in general, you know, this kind of brings to light an issue that, you know, I did send an email out to the, in general, just for informational purposes, that I think moving forward, we should consider doing a forensic audit of the school budget over the past five, six years, just to get a handle on where exactly we stand. You know, there's been a lot of unanswered questions during this budget process, and, you know, I think we need to get on firm footing, a firm foundation, and get a clear understanding of where we are before we can plot a course where we want to go.
Well, I think we, at this point, should await the findings of the town audit and their recommendations. I know that the audits have been clean in past years, so I would like to hear what their recommendations are first. Obviously, any deep audit is going to be extremely expensive, and so, you know, we would want to hear from them about, because they will be doing testing of the records, so we would want them to weigh in on whether there's anything that they think requires further auditing.
Will they be able to tell us how many consultants we have on staff?
Can you ask that?
Will they be able to tell us how many consultants we have on payroll when this is done?
I know there's one that we're taking off payroll. There are not many on payroll. There are very few. I think they're mostly with regard to special education, and then I think you might have a few, Sam, that are consultants, like for special projects or where you don't have the maintenance support, that you would consider a consultant.
By nature, I'm on payroll. They consult services.
All right, so how are they paid?
Payroll, they would be professional services.
Can I ask a question? I've been on the board 10 years. I don't know what you're looking for. Can you tell me?
We're paying consultants to do something for somebody, and I'm trying to figure out how many consultants we pay and how much we pay them and for what.
And why are you thinking that?
Because I'm wondering if there's savings to be had there. You know, if we have, we're looking at cutting a lot of tutors and hourly staff in this budget, and I don't think it's fair to consider that without considering the whole breadth of the budget in total, in line item detail. For comparison's sake, this book here is 35% of the town's budget. This is the town budget, the town side of the budget. This is the budget book that I had from last year's budget cycle on the RTM. This is the Board of Ed budget. You can see not a lot of thickness here. This is 65% of the town's budget. We don't have sufficient detail to understand exactly where all the money's going and how it's working, you know, for the students and for the community. Also, this budget, if you open it up, you know, you have a table of contents that includes a budget message, economic data, background information, policies, summaries, and then we begin the function codes. Each function code is about three or four pages. Some are longer and thicker. You know, my compliments to the town manager and their staff, like every year that I've been involved, like this budget book comes out. It's thorough, detailed, well organized, well indexed. There's appendices with glossary of terms. And the process that we go through in the RTM and what I've witnessed on the council is that they open up a committee of the whole, and they go section by section. They have a schedule of object codes. They go through, they have about three or four meetings per week, and they don't adjourn the meeting. They recess the cow, and they go through section by section, and the department heads are there to answer questions for whatever sections are up any given session. And then, you know, once questions are answered, then deliberation begins, and the bodies, whether it's the town council or the RTM, have the opportunity to move numbers in those object codes, and it's done systematically over the course of a month, where each object code is thoroughly vetted by the body that's responsible for it.
So I have a question for you. This is the town's complete budget?
Yes.
And does that include the Board of Education?
No.
Is there a section?
This is what we got.
Right, I know. So they, he doesn't incorporate?
No.
Additional information on the Board of Ed?
There's one page.
One page.
Right.
Right, and then the CIPs are put in there. Which often get cut.
So as we discussed last night, what I suggested last night is, you know, that we need a new budget process. We need a different presentation, more data, more information. And so Andrea had asked, you know, could that, could that start now? And obviously, that could. I was going to propose that we meet in the committee of the whole. There is no way that we can recreate a whole new budget process by Monday when we need to vote on this budget. However, until the RTM proposes or votes on a final number in May, we can meet and find additional efficiencies in any budget that we adopt. If we don't do anything, this budget will go to last year, so it'll be a zero, if we do nothing at all. So I would suggest that we adopt the number that our best information shows will support the district. And then meet to find the additional efficiencies.
If I may, I would like to share something that I put together, just because to wrap my head around, like, everything that we've gone through. I feel your pain, you know what I mean, like not being able to walk through, and so I'm very, how would I share my screen, Dr. Kennedy? My Zoom's really small, and there are only three. I would just like to share. I have three Excel documents. Yes, please, it's like right there. It won't take me that long. Sorry, I didn't realize you had to.
I don't know which document you want to share.
This one.
Point, have we transitioned, excuse me, could we transit, point of clarification, have we transitioned from a discussion of the town audit?
Yeah, I don't know where we are here.
Into the budget now?
Yes.
I'm just saying the level of detail has been, you know, wanting, and, you know, so that's the reason why, like, I'm concerned about the audit situation, you know, and, yeah, like that, you know, this is the level of detail we should be able to get.
I just want to share something really quick, because, like, we've been getting a lot of data. It's been sort of the same data, dated and tweaked. So what I did, oops, is I took the fiscal year 2024 budget after I spoke to Jay, right? I assumed a 3.5% increase merit of the 24 budget. Then the remaining difference from the original budget, excluding the 3.5%, is.
Clint, can you magnify that at all?
You should be able to click the plus minus to the top, zoom in.
Where?
It's right up top. See where it says one of three, just to the left of that?
One of three.
Other side.
Oh, yes, yes, thank you. And this is just to help, oops, this is just, this was, I put this together to help me. So I'm assuming the staff got a 3.5%, the existing staff in '24. This is, obviously, I had to make assumptions because I don't know what they were. So I'm assuming the staff gets a 3.5% increase. Everything else is staff-related superintendent increases. The non-staff superintendent increases, they all tie back to, like, all of the documents we've received. Transportation is a, is related to contracts, so I just put that in there. DOD, I feel like we had to fund that because we've always had it, so I put it in there. The software, it was requested. I didn't know what amount to put, so I just put $125,000. And then there was some unknown number, 375409, related to what they shared with us, like HVAC, custodial, whatever. So that sort of walks us through, oops, that sort of walks us through the 9% increase. I don't know. It helped me. It made me realize, like, okay, this is our starting point, this is our fiscal year '25, what we're asking, and I just bucketed it. That's the 9% increase that should be tying to what we've been seeing. I know last night I had asked for, like, a 6% scenario and a 4% scenario, and I'm not sure if we're going to receive that. So I did a 6% and a 4% scenario, and so if you're okay, I would like to move off of this. This is just to ground us. This is what we started with, and this is the budget as presented. A 6% scenario, I'm still, I don't want to impact the teachers. I want to make sure they get their merit. I don't want any reductions there. Transportation is still, like, the 482, that's contractual. The DOD that we need, that we're going to bring into our budget, that's still there, and the software. If we just take those items into account, that gets us to our 6%. What is missing is all of this superintendent requests. Then here's the 4% scenario. I didn't quite get to 4%. I could have, but I didn't. I stopped at 4.5. What I did was the 3.5% still remained, our transportation remained, our DOD remained, our software remained. The non-staff decrease, that ties to this sheet excluding the 1.6 million, because I seriously believe that we should not be borrowing. So if you take the 2.2 million minus the 1.6, that's the 594, and so we will take all of those that was proposed. If staff-related, if we go over to the next page of the sheet that we've been receiving, the managed, the, you know, administration has proposed reducing 1.3 million of personnel. I didn't think that was fair, so the only thing I took was, and we could pick as a board, whatever, I only took the subs to make it as least impactful, because I don't think we should be reducing teachers and anything else. So if we take that suggestion, that gets us to 4.5. So at this rate, from what I've seen, we were supporting students at, like, 17,000 per pupil. Our mayor couldn't recall if it was 4,400 or 4,100 during our joint meeting, so I put both there. With the 4.5 scenario, we are going to be supporting students at 19,000 per pupil and 20,000 per pupil. If we go back to the 6% scenario, 19,000.6 and 21, 21. If we go to the superintendent's proposed budget, it's 20,000 and 22,000, basically. I'm sorry, I'm rounding. So this helped me ground us and me, and if, and that's just how I viewed it. And I just wanted to share that with the team because I'm, I just wanted to see the walk to get us from point A to point B.
Could you email that to the board?
Sure.
Thank you. All the documents. Just like to look at that.
So thank you for your time, but I just wanted to share that to just ground everyone. So I feel like we can do this without impacting our staff, our administration. The only thing that's been removed in 6% and 4% scenario would be the investments, and that's in second and third column. And like I said, my numbers aren't precise. I had to make assumptions along the way.
So part of the problem with the budget as it sits right now is we don't know what the governor's proposal on tuition reimbursement for the magnet programs, the inter-district magnet programs. We don't know if that will be accepted or not by the legislature, and we don't know, I understand there's still some tweaking with the health insurance. So again, my, my idea is, I think we vote, my personal opinion, is we vote for a number that, that supports the students, and then we continue to meet to find further efficiencies that we can suggest to the town bodies. Because as much as I want to have all this data and I want to make all of the calculations, I, we really don't have the time, given the constraint of the budget process, that we have until February 28 to give a number. And again, if we don't give a number, it goes back to last year's number. And given that the main drivers of this increase is the health insurance and also the increase in the, you know, the bus transportation contract, I don't want to be hasty in cutting people that affect the students directly on those outside forces over which we have no control. Plus, we still don't know what the numbers are going to be.
And I'd like to take you through a scenario that we've worked out today as well, with all departments taking a really close look. And we do see some even further efficiencies, so I like the plan that Jay suggests, because there could be, we found one bus, we might find another, and we're doing that survey to find out about ridership. So I think if, Dave, if you could take us through and orient us to where we left off, I guess, and then what we did further after that. I think we were at the 8.76 on the second page.
Yeah, let me just try to screen share real quick, sorry.
Okay.
Yep, so I'm just on the third page. You've seen one and two, nothing changes there. So the first item, Adrian made a good point. If you go back and look at that, I think that's a good point, some of the daily subs back. If you go back and look every year, I will only go back a couple of years, but, you know, total subs have run about a million, 900,000 to about a million and two. Sorry about that.
Dave, can you speak in the microphone, please?
I know, that's sorry, my bad. I was, I was off and running. My bad.
No problem.
So it, it did look like we cut a little bit too deep there. We were probably in the 600,000 range, and it's been anywhere between, like I said, about a 900 to a million one, million two every year. So, you know, I just suggested we put another $200,000 back in, not changing the building subs, but making sure we have coverage if they need it at the schools.
All right, so where, where is that?
That's at the top. Oh, you're on page three.
Page, page.
You want to orient?
Page three, the last page.
We did the first two pages yesterday, so we're on page three.
Nothing's changed on the first two pages?
Nope, it's the same what you had before.
Question. Did we adjust for putting in the software? Do we have information on what the software cost would be?
He's going to go through that.
If I can get to that, yeah.
Okay.
Let me just walk through this if you don't mind. Yep, I'd like to get your advice on that. So Adrian, I did, and to be honest, I didn't take, you know, hey, number of expected subs times a rate. I just wanted to make sure we had what I felt like was adequate funding in total for substitutes.
Looking at history.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We made an educated guess.
Yeah.
Yep. The second one was, I think the superintendent just mentioned, we feel like we have an opportunity to reduce one bus. Each bus is 79,000 and change, plus you've got a little fuel, so we put an estimate in there for $80,000. The third one was summer school. We had about 77,000, you know, almost 78,000 in there for summer school. Does not include ESY. ESY still stays in the board. But we feel like with one of the new grants, we can cover summer school next year.
Yeah, this is for the following year.
Following year, yep.
And it used to be that when you had credit recovery or the program at Fitch, students would pay, and if students couldn't afford to pay, we would take care of it. So, you know, it's kind of going back to the model prior to COVID.
So we're going to be making students pay for summer school?
They used to always pay for summer school. It was either for enrichment or for credit recovery, and so, you know, that model will be reinstituted, not this year, because we do have a grant this year, but the following year.
So the ESY program that was referenced that we're maintaining in the board's budget is the extended school year program mandated for special ed. So that's not what we're
Not changing.
Referring to.
No.
Right.
So, all right, so this is just for next year. So for the summer of '24?
We're covered. We're going to do what we've done in the past.
So the change will be for the 26 budget?
Yeah.
And subventions will be available for those who can't afford it?
Yep, yep. And we based on free and reduced lunch numbers, yep.
The next one is adult ed. So this, this includes the payment that we have to New London as well as any stipends and/or, I think it's kind of materials that we have for the adult ed program. So the adult ed program would really be no longer going forward. I think they have some options.
And that program has really dwindled. There have been very few students who've taken advantage of it.
Yep.
They can still go to New London.
Right.
Anybody can go to New London and get, receive that education.
Will they be charged for that?
I don't know if there'll be a charge for that or not. They, I don't know if there's any fees for them now, but there is a grant that we had received, but there is another $200,000 in there for New London.
Would you be kind enough to look into if we had a Groton resident that wanted to get adult education, how that would be funded?
So even if they want to participate in New London, there's a nice manual that comes out to Groton residents, and there's usually, depending on what the course is, there might be a small stipend for the course. So it's actually listed in the manual for each course. So there is a small fee.
And have, have they been paying the fee this year?
Any, any, yeah, any Groton resident can attend the New London.
There'd be no, if I'm understanding, there'd be no difference?
No difference, as far as I know. But I'll, I'll double check that.
Just to be clear, when you refer to adult education, are you talking about ancillary classes, or are you talking about GED instruction?
There's a variety. So there's EL courses, there's GED courses, there are.
American citizenship?
Yep, and, and there's.
And there's high school credit.
High school credit, yep.
And so this funding that is potentially going to be cut would have supplied payment to cover people who are trying to do English language learning, citizenship, GED or high school credit?
I don't know if there's an extra fee attached for those. I don't know. I'd have to find out.
Because I'm aware, it's like some municipalities provide free GED instruction for anyone that is seeking it.
It looks like, per the Connecticut general statutes, the programs that are free of charge are the adult basic education, secondary school completion, and the student citizenship, GED and citizenship are provided free of charge.
The high school completion, would that be a CDP, credit diploma program?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they, they have, I know when we first got here, Norwich was our collaborator, and so we had, you know, Norwich coming in. So there is an adult ed program in both Norwich and New London.
So are we saying per state statute that this, this cut would not affect the supports for those programs, AB, GD, CDP?
It says it has to be provided free of charge.
And I'm, I'm looking at the New London site right now.
Mm-hmm.
And it says, free of charge. Students must reside in New London, Waterford, Montville, Groton, or Lyme, Old Lyme.
Okay, so this, this would only affect what? What would this actually affect?
What was the money covering before?
Yeah. Who would be impacted by this cut?
So I know that there were eight students who were in the class this year, or in the whole school for credit, for the high school credit. And I don't remember the number of EL, but there was a class of EL, and there was a class of GED that met on a regular basis. So there. So there, it was not really full. It was not a real...
So, I, I don't understand, if, if the state says it's free, are we paying for that
or is the state paying for that?
The state pays for it.
So what?
So that's why we would get a grant if we ran it here in Groton.
So we're just not...
We're not going to run it here in Groton, it'll be in New London.
So this, this cut represents the fact that we're not here, that the idea is that we could potentially not run the program in this facility?
Right.
And people would be forced to go to New London to get those services?
A lot of the programs are in New London if they choose to go to New London, too.
Yeah, it says at the municipalities, the towns get reimbursed based on a sliding scale depending on wealth by the Connecticut State Department of Education for the programs.
And that goes to the town?
So it would come out, what? So historically, I guess, I'm just curious to know about this number now. Would this been, have been a number that we paid as a Board of Ed to provide these services in this town? And then the reimbursement from the state would go back to the town's general fund?
I don't know the answer to that. I, I think, I'm not sure where the grant money went. Did we add it to the revenue?
The grant has always been on our, excuse me, on our revenue page.
So the grant money would come back to the town because we've got it stationed in revenue, so we knew it was coming.
It's not much, but it's, it would come.
Every little bit counts.
Save the expense and we don't lose the reimbursement.
It's just that the program is not thriving and we feel like it's an expense on the board. The board side does have to pick up the couple hundred thousand. So, you know, we've been monitoring it really carefully and, you know, we really feel like it's, you know, something that people can still achieve with the city bus going over to New London.
That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah.
Because you already have, let's say, English as a second language, right? We're a very diverse community, we have roughly 40,000 people. You know, people are moving in and out, and if somebody wants to get their GED or their, you know, high school, English as a second language, but they don't have a vehicle or anything, I feel like we're worried about the kids, we want to make sure they're okay, but we also need to worry about the adults who never had the opportunity to learn. So yes, it's an easy, like, oh yeah, you know, it's not thriving, but are, once again, are we even advertising? I get from New London, like a little, like nice little pamphlet that shows like adult ed and all of their courses. When I get the Groton one, I don't think I see that in there, and maybe I just don't notice that...
I don't know that you would get a Groton one, because we use the New London one.
Okay, so when I, the Groton one with the parks and rec, it's not in there?
That's different, that's different now. The only other thing that Groton is able to provide at Fitch High School is the program for the eight students who will ultimately get a diploma.
Okay.
And then I think there's an E L class, but the teachers from New London, I think, come over and teach it. And then there's a GED course and the teachers from New London that we're paying for come over here. So instead of them having to come here and have the facility of Fitch, people would have to go to New London to get the same education. And we wouldn't have to pay the 200,000.
Do, do we have a function code for, like, where this is in our actual budget? Is it high school completion?
It's on page five, five, two, there's, there's an adult ed one and then there's the line under high school completion.
I remember seeing, I think it was...
So, I mean, I guess I'm not sure, are we actually going to save $252,000? Or does part of that come back in a grant, so we're actually going to save less? I'm kind of confused.
So the 210 is, is payments we make out, out of district.
All right.
So that's going away.
Yep, I see, that's 556.
Yep, and then the 42 is, that's in-house, that's for, you know, we have, I'm going to call it sort of administrators or teachers that, guidance counselor that oversee the program.
So that's just buried in the budget somewhere else, that 42,000?
What page are you on?
The code is 1310, right, that's your, the school completion, 132. So if you see it, second line down.
On page 553, the adult education instructors, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, so then 554, line 124, 42, 230?
Yep.
All right.
All right, all right, okay.
So then there's a grant that we receive. I'd, I'd feel a little homework, I'm not super familiar with it, but that's on your grant page.
So does that get split out of that 42,000? Does that go into the high school completion number two or no?
It, it's, it's just, I don't know sure what you mean by together, it's under that function code.
Yeah. But it...
So that's the onsite.
So it says the high school completion is 85, 519, so...
That's for the eight students that we have.
So, all right, so this looks like the total of 252 that we spend, right, about?
Yep.
But you're saying we get some back in state grants, how much is that?
Yeah, it's on the grant page, if you've got the grant page there, it hasn't been ton.
I'm just wondering, so it doesn't, so it doesn't cost us 252,000, it costs some number less than that, because part of that 252 is reimbursed?
Yeah, I mean, they're just different payments, right? So I'm just trying to keep the two separate, right? Because we don't necessarily, I don't intermingle the magnet, I mean, the grants with this number, right?
Yeah.
Because it's the board number, but net, net across the place, it would be something less than that.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to know what it actually costs us to, yeah, what it actually costs the district, you know, taking any income we, or whatever you want to call the grant into account, so it's not actually going to be a $252,000 savings.
Well, it'll, it'll be a reduction of the, of this...
Just of the budget number, but that's not the, the overall cost to the town is at 252 now, it's less.
Yeah, it just, but it, it comes out of the Board of Education budget, yeah.
All right, and then to just go back a line, if we, I mean, how many kids, what's our graduation rate?
Could you circle that one on this?
I'm, I'm worried that if we start charging kids when we're just trying to do what we can to get them to graduate, because I imagine there's a lot of kids that are on the edge. And my guess is that a lot of those kids don't have a lot of money or are putting any kind of roadblocks to paying to get a high school degree.
So those kids we wouldn't charge, are you talking about the summer school now? Are you talking about that?
Yeah, I'm just going back one line.
Yeah, so the summer school, if they can't afford to pay, we will make sure that we take care of that.
What's the process of determining inability to pay?
Well, it's usually with the free and reduced lunch.
So they'd have to apply for that or have they been out of this?
Well, I think our kids mostly do apply for that, you know, if they can. And, you know, that's why we have four C E P schools, you know, community eligibility schools, because they've applied and we know the numbers are such that that would warrant that.
I just don't know that, I personally agree that we should put financial roadblocks on a high school diploma, even if the kids, you know, if somebody gets an F and they can't graduate, I just don't know that putting a financial roadblock in the way, because there might be somebody that doesn't meet the financial need but has real needs. I mean, we all know how much rents have gone up and the real cost and the real, like, throwing that into a family's budget, if the family is even willing to support it at all, I feel like we might lose one kid or 10 kids by charging for that. And I think losing any kids from getting a high school diploma would be traumatic, in my opinion.
Yeah, I'm inclined to agree with that.
I agree with that, too.
And the people that end up in that situation are already on a razor's edge with probably a lot of life circumstances.
We have been able to take care of it during COVID, which has been a good thing, through R B S R funding. So that was one of those benefits of COVID.
What did we do before COVID, before the R B S R? We charged them? Okay.
That's why we went back to the old model of what we did. We charged those who could afford it and we didn't charge those who could not.
So we don't charge kids to take the A P tests and the I P tests? So the high-end learners get free services, but the, but the, the kids that have need to just get a high school diploma, well, in this case, don't. I don't, I don't, I'm going to stand by, I don't agree with cutting that at all.
Right.
Yeah, to piggyback on that, right? Like, say you made a mistake in high school and now you're coming back because you realize, like, how important it is, you are making a change to your life and now we're sort of putting a roadblock, so, and then agreeing with everything else you had said.
I'd like to just take a moment to say that this is why I recommend that we continue to study past this deadline. You know, what I'm hearing here is a very important discussion about what our values are, and our values need to be reflected in our budget. Our budget is the only way that we can really take a stand on our values. And we aren't going to be able to do that in the next two days. But we can commit, if, if, if the board agrees with this, to continue to meet, the budget is not final, we, we do have to submit a figure next week.
We have to submit a budget book.
And, and a budget book. However, we can continue to, to study up until the, the R T M comes up with a, a final figure. We can make adjustments as long as they don't go higher, you know, unless we can convince them to adjust more. But I think these kinds of conversations are what we need to be having about our mission and our vision and our priorities.
So speaking hypothetically, if we passed a budget that had, like, say, a 9% increase overall, with some adjustment to these proposals that we are looking at right now, we as a board could vote to say that we're going to continue to evaluate the budget and that we want to evaluate it on a level commensurate with this level of rigor?
If the board as a whole agrees, and this is just my proposal, this is not, I'm not speaking for...
I'm just saying hypothetically, that's a path that we could take as a board.
Yes. And continue to study issues like this. And the, the, the time, as you know, is very compressed with the budget. You, you have to have it in by February 25th, but it's not actually final till May. In the meantime, the legislature's still meeting and still changing numbers, everything's on shifting sands. So my recommendation is that we come up with the, the number that we think will support and then we continue to meet and decide, you know, we could, we could theoretically go to the town council and give them a list of things that we have determined that we, you know, believe are efficiencies.
Well, if I understand it correctly, at the end of the day, the town council nor, and the R T M, neither board, I mean, sorry, neither, neither body can instruct the board on where to allocate the money within the total number. All they vote on is a total number.
That's correct.
And if I'm understanding this hypothetical situation that we're discussing, if we pass a certain number in the next day or two, or I guess it would be the official, the, the vote would be on Monday night to make it ratified, correct?
Yes, I believe that.
So we could move any amount anywhere within the budget, within that number. As long as we don't exceed the 9%, say, I'm just saying using 9% is hypothetical. Like, say we, we vote on whatever conglomeration we come up with over the next couple of days and it, say, comes out to be a 9% increase, right? That number goes to the town council. Say somehow that number survives the, the scrutiny of the town council and the R T M and they, they, they accept the 9% as proposed and, but understanding that we kind of put a post-it note saying that we're still working on where the money's actually going to be allocated within that and we may eventually get it down to something a little bit lower.
I would say...
So I'm just, I'm just want to be clear, like, that's the, that's the hypothetical that, that you were proposing?
No, I think we're proposing that we look at the budget, if there are things on here that you don't agree with, we can certainly take them off and end up with the number, which, the number was 8.76 yesterday and we've brought it down to 8.41. I can understand if you want to take off the summer school and we can adjust that, but I think that number would stand and then we would continue to look for other efficiencies. Like, I think there's another school bus that might be available, so we can continue. But I think the things that have been recommended should stand. That's my recommendation.
Jay, can I ask, I just need a point of clarification, you had said February 25th, is that the 25th or the 28th?
No, I'm sorry, the 28th.
Sorry, I just went into panic mode on books.
Yeah, no, it's February 28th.
No, I, I just wanted to double check, it's the first time going through, I just wanted to double check.
And we transmitted electronic.
Yep, yep. Thank you.
For the clarification, the D O D supplemental grant, if that does come through, that comes directly to the board, it doesn't go to the town, so we would be able then to increase services beyond what we have in this budget, if it were to come through.
Because, see, that's another thing we don't know. Sitting here right now, we don't know if it's going to come through.
We're being conservative.
I can speak a little bit on that.
You can.
So currently, I was talking to Miranda Chapman, we are not at the 19.5% that we need to be. It is a, you hit 19.5% of the students are D O D or it's zero. And we're not at that number that we need to be at. She pulled the M D C data two days ago and double checked, she's been fingering through every single person she can find, we're not at the number. So right now, I would not bet on getting to that 19.5% and getting that money because we're not there.
How far are we away, do you?
We're at least 30 children away, but it, that doesn't mean it can't change with the movement of a boat, so we're not there.
Say theoretically, a boat were to come in before the end of the year.
It depends on what percentage of the kids go to school. If you have a boat come in and all of them are holding school, you're lower and you're still not getting it. So it's, you can't theorize that you're going to get that because it's a all or nothing.
So we've removed it from the budget because we're certainly not going to...
That's fair.
But...
I would not lean on it.
Shifting sands.
Yeah.
Well, to that point, you know, as Matthew mentioned last night and, and, you know, we discussed last week and, you know, we've discussed a number of times, this would be a great example of how a non-lapsing fund could benefit the Board of Education. You know, because we don't know that and we can't plan for that grant coming through, but if that grant does somehow come through, then that would create some excess funding in another area. You know, because we use that grant to take pressure off of previously budgeted monies. And then those previous budgeted monies could go into the non-lapsing fund, which then could be, that's our buffer to help address longstanding C I P concerns and various other emergency situations that could crop up unanticipated, so...
And I would hope, Jay, that when we do our hearing, or maybe even before we do our hearing, that when we do the transmission of whatever budget we adopt, that there'd be a cover letter explaining this, featuring the request for the council's consideration of a non-lapsing fund as an urgent matter.
I agree. Adrian?
I agree with that. I would like to go back to, if we continue to talk about the budget, I, I appreciate you'd like to have something set, but I feel like we talked about a lot of things, we asked questions, but we didn't necessarily, like, I don't know that any of my questions had any impact on any of this or personal beliefs, you know, I mean, I guess the buses or the substitutes, so, but, you know, I mean, I personally still don't know how we're going to fund the right-to-read legislation. I mean, I've asked lots of questions about that, we are currently not in compliance, we need to change our program, and we still don't have an answer on how we're going to fund that. And I, I have asked where it is in the budget here, where it has been historically, and I haven't... I haven't gotten an answer. So, to just vote on this and say that this is going to be it, I feel like we should plan on some long nights for the next four nights. Because I have a lot of questions that I don't have answers for. I mean, can anyone tell me how much money we have set aside for the right-to-read legislation for compliance? Do we know?
I would too, Phil. I mean, I think that we had the right-to-read grant, and there's still remaining money there in the Title I money, and then I think in the DoD, we put aside a couple hundred thousand dollars, too.
Yeah, I mean, right now, we're obviously, you know, we're reviewing the programs. You know, there's a program out there that's $1.2 million that we're not even considering. We're eliminating other programs for a number of different reasons, and we're sort of narrowing down our field.
We, I mean, I've asked for this to be discussed lots of times, in addition to test scores and to other things. I asked the principals if they felt they were staffed well enough. So, but I realize that this stuff's expensive. We found out three months ago that we were not in compliance, and we, so, if we do have to spend $600,000 or whatever, where is that money going to come from? And how much longer are we going to wait? I mean, are we even piloting any programs right now?
Well, right now, we're, we are using some of the funds right now to, we've already used funds to get to the partially accepted list.
We're not on the partially accepted list.
That's what he told us.
I spoke with him, he said we are, that our status was not changed.
I think, I think that's in terms of the waiver. The waiver, they're not...
The waiver status did not change. We are...
But he said we're already partially there.
The district status has changed.
I think we've...
Yeah, he said they're not reprinting, they're not issuing an updated list, but we did get confirmation from him that we're in transitional status.
I asked him, and he said we are not officially in transitional status.
Well, I think he spoke in front of the board and said just the opposite of that.
I spoke with him after, after some emails with Commissioner Tucker and, or Russell Tucker, I'm sorry if I get her name incorrect, but, and he said that our program is not in compliance. The only thing that's going to be accepted, as of the way the law states, is what's on the website. The, I want to say it's six programs and then another half dozen compendium programs or something. So, from my discussions, and we should have this conversation again and have some clarity, but what we have on paper is that we're not in compliance. My discussion with him was that we're not in compliance, and it seems to me like it's going to actually take money to get in compliance, and we haven't talked about this.
Well, again, you know, we've purchased our UFLI program, which we've talked about before, our Hagerty program, and that is what we were told moved us to the partially, that we are all set for this deadline that they set for July of 2020.
So, we're still using Teachers College and Fountas and Pennell, which the state said are not accepted programs, correct?
But, but what you have to understand is, we can't, we realize that the waiver came out, and we, we know the programs that are accepted, and that changes, that it's gone through a couple of changes since they released the list, and they've increased the list, they've increased the number of compendiums on that list. We do need time to evaluate those programs. We can't just stop dead, throw everything in the trash, and stop what we're doing. So, we have continued to use what has worked and what the teachers have been using, but we have supplemented them with the new materials. The process is slow.
But our core program is not in compliance. Our core program right now is Teachers College.
Correct.
This is a budget issue, right?
Did he discuss...
It's going to cost money to get in compliance. That's the end of it.
Did he discuss whether the State Department of Ed is working on the model curriculum?
No.
Because a program is not a curriculum, so we could buy the program, it doesn't become the curriculum.
He discussed what the law is, and he said the only ones, so some systems got approved, they came up with compendiums that met all of the requirements, and they were approved, and those were added to the list on the website, so that's why there's now six or eight. He said, as of the law, no other programs are accepted. It's on the website or not. So, I'm just saying that this is going to cost money, and I, we need to plan for it.
Right. No, and that part I agree with.
I would have loved to have had this conversation two months ago, a month ago. I mean, I've been asking, obviously, you know that this is, you know, a passion for me, but, you know, from a law standpoint, I mean, partially, he said we were working towards moving, I mean, I agree, we've taken some science of reading programs and put them into a balanced literacy program, but I don't think that the state plan, the state law doesn't accept, like, a mishmash of multiple ways of going about teaching reading. They want the science of reading. So, I'm just saying, from a budget standpoint, we need to plan for this. We need to be given some options for ways forward. And we're wasting the kids' time by not implementing a program that we know is going to be successful.
And I think this, I think this also proves the point that we need more time to study all of this, that we don't have the answers tonight, and, you know, there is this deadline in effect, which is why it's so important that it not go to zero, you know what I mean? That it not go back to last year's number. And it's why I personally think that, you know, some of the lower number scenarios aren't going to pick up the real needs that our students have. So, I think it just builds on that point.
And just so the board knows, like, our reading success is, first and third grade is in the mid-50s or low-50s as far as percent of kids that are at or above grade level, correct? I mean, just so we all know how successful we are in reading, is that about accurate?
Yeah. Yeah, we are not where we want to be, obviously. We all know how important it is.
All right.
It is, it just, it does take time. Like we said, you know, we had a timetable set where we're visiting programs, which we've completed, and now it's about, you know, reviewing the pluses and minuses. Many, two or three of those programs at least that are on the list have been deemed culturally insensitive, and those, we are not going to use with our kids. So, they've made it according to their rubric, but, you know, I don't know, I haven't seen their rubric that they used, but it clearly didn't include...
So, have you gotten to the point of piloting any programs outside of UFLI?
Our hope is to, you know, whatever step we take is to take it suit right before the end of this year, and if it involves piloting, it would be starting those...
I think Lisa Corcoran's involved with the state group Literacy How, and they have a whole process that they're going to be going through with us.
Yeah, it's called the Hill.
The Hill, yeah.
They assist districts with evaluating these programs and how to, you know, properly implement pilots and making sure we look at...
So, she's getting training in that, and we'll bring our team through that training.
Is that one of our consultants?
Who?
No, that doesn't cost any money.
No, I actually left a message at Literacy How today requesting some, some numbers to have them come in and evaluate our program, because I feel like we need somebody that doesn't necessarily come from a balanced literacy background or that understands...
Are you talking about Margie Gillis?
I left a message at the office number.
We just talked to her today, she's coming in to do a professional development for us.
Yeah, I would love to have her evaluate the program and get her opinion on our program.
Well, our program is...
So, we can have an outside evaluation.
We're going to be moving to, we've already started shifting, so there's no reason to evaluate what we have currently, because we're going to be changing.
I don't know that the shift was called...
Jay, point of order, can we get back to the budget?
Thank you.
I mean, this sounds more like a curriculum.
Yeah.
Can we get back to talking about, you know, like Jen's point?
Well, I guess, tied to a budget item, like, I would say, like, what is a ballpark figure that we could use as a placeholder to create space?
Ian, you cut me off, Ian.
Ian? What did you say, Beverly? I didn't hear you.
Sorry, last night I had problems with the microphone.
Never mind, let Ian run the show. Let Ian run the show.
No, I want to hear from you, Beverly.
So, what kind of a placeholder could we put in here?
Adrian, do you have a placeholder figure you would be...
No, I would, I would like to ask the administration to tell me what a, I have no idea what a program costs. She, we were told maybe $600,000, maybe $1.1 million. It sounds like they're real numbers, not just $50,000, so I think that we need to budget for it.
Whatever the number is, if either of those numbers is correct, my assumption is, is that expense would be phased over some time, it wouldn't be a single check written at once. Am I correct in that assumption?
It could be a couple-year plan.
So, whatever the figure is, we would not need to come up with that all at once.
I don't know. I would love to have the answer to that, and I think that we can ask the administration to have that, to have a budget number for what it's going to cost to implement this.
And another possible option could be taking what we have and rewriting it in-house. That could also be with, you know, you know, what, that's one of the options this place, the Hill, has said that they've done in different districts, so it wouldn't be necessary...
Has the state accepted anything like that?
Yeah. Some of them have gotten the waiver passed based on work that they've done.
With the help.
That, it's unclear. I mean, as you've probably seen, if you've examined the process, what's gotten passed and what hasn't, there's no clear, there's no clear line. There's districts that are using TC that got passed.
Yeah, well, partial...
That's the frustrating part.
They got partial implementation where we didn't. But at the end of this, we need actual full implementation. So, those, so we're arguing over whether we got a C or a D, and we all need to get As.
I think this disproves my point that we won't get this figured out tonight.
To go back to where this whole thing started, that's why I don't necessarily feel comfortable saying that every number and every line item is, like, that I agree enough to, to agree on that.
And I'm inclined to agree with that point, because, again, I don't think we have the full information. You know, like, we've made a lot of adjustments on the hourly employees, but we have not taken a critical look at the consultants, and, you know, what are we spending there? I mean, I understand anecdotally, like, we're hearing, like, maybe this, maybe that, but that's not written. That's not reviewable. That's not a firm line item.
Now, Dave had a question.
Yeah, I was, well, before Ian spoke, I was really just going to ask for some clarity on just where we were right now, because I'm just not quite sure where we are. And I need some clarity on point two, which is, I think Ian was going down this route, I just got to piggyback off your comment. So, you take a vote tonight, pick a number, what happens with the adjustments going forward? Is it a, is it a board decision where the adjustments are, or is it a superintendent? And I'm literally just trying to get some, I'm just trying to get some clarity, because let's say we spend five more nights looking at each other, and you decide that you want to make a million-dollar cut, is that okay, or do we have to run it through the superintendent? I just don't know the process, you know?
It's always been the superintendent's job...
I'm just trying to figure out...
To figure out where those cuts need to come from, because I'm running this, you know, I am in charge of this district, and I have to know that my students and my teachers are, you know, and all staff are, you know, have what they need to be able to do their job. So, I feel like I've done a very careful job working with my team. It's not just me. I've worked with my principals, I've worked with my administrators, and, you know, we have come up with things that we feel are not going to affect teaching and learning, as you had set out to say. So, there's, you know, I understand what you're saying, and I could certainly see adding, you know, we've got funds set aside in other places, but I can see setting aside another $300,000 to make sure that we had coverage for what you're talking about with the program. But, and I can see if you don't want to have kids pay for the summer school, we can take that out. But once we get to a number, once we've agreed, I think we set that number, and we bring that forth, we're going to have to do a whole budget book, so we have to have what we're taking out and what we're leaving in. And I think I've done a really good job with my staff in preparing something for you. And I know it's a new process, and I know it's been complicated, and you're trying to understand it completely, but I, I'm just saying that I think we do the very best we can, set aside that number that we think is going to be fair, and if you want to continue through finance and facilities or however, looking at, you know, any other cost efficiencies before we go to, you know, we have a couple weeks before we go to the public hearing and to the town council, we actually have a month. So, that can be done, but I would just ask for you to trust in this process and know that what we have prepared is something that's going to, I think, be the best for our students and staff, without taking away things that they need.
Jen?
So, we started this process in January, and we're now here at the end of February, and I feel like we've been looking at the same numbers. Any ideas brought up to look at something differently, or to look at it in a different manner? Any suggestions? I feel like we are being, not being forced necessarily, but being asked to take the superintendent's budget and make it the Board of Ed budget without having input.
Well, I would say there's a lot of things that I've heard you say that we've actually put in there.
No, I know, but...
There's many, many things that you've asked us to look at, travel, professional learning. We've really looked at every single line item, so, you know, to really be fair. You know, it didn't come from one particular place, we really examined the entire budget. So, I think I have listened very carefully.
Yeah, I know, you know, just one example that I know of is that Adrian was very, and Matthew, by the way, Matthew mentioned it early on, the reductions to the substitutes, and so that has been considered and is being added back in. So, I do believe there's, you know...
I think, Jen, you had asked about that athletics, and I went to Mark Romano and asked him to look through his budget. Unfortunately, he said he had already been reducing it, so he didn't feel like he could do it anymore, but I did go back and ask him, so, you know, I've taken copious notes and tried to go back and really see.
I wasn't the athletic person.
Oh, someone had asked me about the athletics.
I was the person who asked about that.
Okay.
And just for...
May I? I'll speak softly to try to mask my distress. From my perception, right or wrong, there's clearly a not insignificant amount of daylight between the budget as presented and amended and the wishes of a significant number of the members of the board. Having said that, I don't disagree with you, Ian. I don't disagree with you, Adrian. I support what you want to do, but I am so frustrated to hear this brought up again and again, because we have a deadline now, and we cannot possibly answer the questions and the depth of information that you justifiably are asking for within the timeframe we have. So, I plead with you, put it in the blackboard, put it on the parking lot, and let's take it up in the next 10 days, once we've got this budget, and let's go right after it with all seriousness. But we need a figure now. I don't mean to offend, I have the greatest of respect for you both, but we really need to get on to the budget under...
Yeah. So, I, so just, so for the bussing, or the substitute thing, just, just so that this is clear, I didn't actually find anything. We just kind of narrowed in on what an accurate number was, so I'm not, I don't want to, that's not like, that wasn't one of my goals with this, that was just...
No, it's a good call.
...bringing up a question to, to be more accurate with a number, so I don't, so that's just an efficiency, not a, you know, a philosophical opinion about the budget. I agree, I guess my thing started with, you know, what Jay had proposed, is that we kind of continue to look at this and find efficiencies, or maybe move money from one place to another over the next month or whatever. So, if we both vote on something on Monday, I want to just have clarity that that would be the path forward, whereas I heard Susan say she would prefer that this is, you know, a more set-in-stone budget with maybe a little bit of adjustment, but not much, on Monday.
Certainly, if we can find more efficiencies, though. Because we've really tried to lay it out, so that it's in different categories, and if there are things you don't agree with, you certainly should say now. I think that you're, those are things that you want to put aside for now.
Well, I feel like there's a lot that we're not going to get an answer to, to Matthew's point. There, there's too many unanswered questions to, to be able to say that, like, we can just make a line, you know, a dot next to 10 items and come back to that, in my own mind.
May I continue? I tried last night to express the question that we needed to consider looking at minimum enrollments as a way of, either if we have the right enrollment, and that's your decision as to what the enrollment... that's your decision as to what the enrollment is, then we do the class. And if we don't, we've saved a percentage of an FTE. I asked about class size. I understood you to have said, though I may be wrong, that you'd look at it. I don't see anything that was coming.
So this going to, I did answer this. We're having power school schedulers come in and work with our administrators, and that process is happening now. And they are looking and deciding which courses will run based on a minimum number and which will not. And, and it might be that we have to shift it for another semester or another year for the children to take the course. So that is happening as we speak. But you won't have an answer in a month.
That may, okay, I, I hear you. Maybe it is impossible to postpone or defer, that's the word I want, to defer the purchase of some computers and new licenses. And, or maybe it is possible to just limp along and do repairs for an extra year. Maybe it is possible to say to the department heads, not can you find some, some efficient, additional efficiencies in athletics, but find some additional. It's painful. You're pained. I'm pained. The kids are pained. The directors will be pained. But that's the way it is now. And that's, that's what we signed up when we took these, with all of the benefit package.
I know. That's for sure.
And to that end, I mean, we have been asking for more context, more information, and it has not been forthcoming. The software audit was promised to us two weeks ago.
I think it was put up.
Do we have it?
Is it in there? I didn't get an email saying, go to the spreadsheet.
The survey from the, from the teachers is, is up there.
Okay, I thought the software.
The actual audit, the audit, the software audit was supposed to, like, tell us what our status of software is, like, are there fees that we can drop? Are there, how much?
We've already reviewed the software audit, and there are things.
Where is the audit?
Well, we've already put them on the list of things that have come through the teacher's survey. And that's why it's my, I have to regulate that, knowing my district and knowing the teachers and what their, their ideas are and what the usage is. So that was my job to do. And we did put some of those softwares on there.
Well, I was given the impression that we were going to be able to review the actual audit itself.
I was.
And the survey is on the spreadsheet, you say now?
Yes, it is. The survey results.
Survey results.
For the teacher's survey for software.
For the software.
Is this going to be a composite, as far as, like, is it an abridged version? Or am I going to be able to read, like, the actual inputs from the teachers?
I took all the answers from the survey, exported them to an Excel spreadsheet, and that's what's on there.
And there's a link for that?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, my point is that we're not going to be able to sit here and analyze the software audit tonight. But if there are members.
We have done that job, and we have taken things off the list that were not being used, and the teachers do not want anymore. So know that that's been done.
The, the Board of Ed can direct the superintendent and the staff to use their expertise to make decisions. And, you know, we do have input, but we can't micromanage every line and every data point. Jen?
What we can do is suggest a target amount of what is an acceptable increase for the district.
That's correct. And that's what I'm suggesting we do. We come up with an acceptable increase, and we continue, those board members who want to come in to a COW and dig deeper into certain things where we think that efficiencies can be found, can do so, and continue to do that work.
Would it be appropriate, Jay, for someone to suggest, one of the board members to suggest? I don't think I'm capable of doing it, quite honestly. A figure, put a figure forth that we can discuss, a real figure forth, whether it's Jen, whether it's Adrian, whether it's, doesn't matter who it is. Somebody put a figure forth that we can discuss. I'd like to move from the general to the specific.
Well, and I'd like you to consider the numbers that I have given you. You've got some ideas right now on, you know, what can be done, that I've said that can be done without, you know, putting teaching and learning and compromising it for our students and our teachers.
I have heard some discussion, guys, correct me, guys and gals, that there are two items, summer school and adult education, that we may be taking off this list of economies. Did I misunderstand?
I'm not in favor of cutting the funding to summer school and adult education.
Okay, so that, that's what I heard.
I'm not either.
Is there any consensus on that?
Well, I'll make a motion that we rescind that cut.
Well, I don't know that we're making motions. Just, are we making motions, Jay, or just looking for a consensus? Well, how do you want, you're in charge. Thank God.
If, if, if it's the will of the board that we start taking votes on lines, I think that's it.
Well, this, again, just, you know, to reiterate the point, this, this sort of calls in, like, we do need to refine the way that we do this. So there is some more organization to it.
We, we're on board with that, I think.
Beverly?
Thank you, Jen. Susan, with the cut for summer school and adult ed, how many students do we currently have that attend adult ed?
So the students who are getting their degree, their, their high school degree, there are eight students that we have in the total program. And they're mostly juniors and seniors. And then for the EL program, there's a class, I think of about 25, and the same is true for GED. So, and those are true adults. Those are adults that have come back. And because it's actually hosted from the New London Public Schools, they are our, I guess, our partner in this. And we pay them for that. And then they, they bring this, their teachers to Fitch High School. But our teachers are actually teaching the eight students who are the high school credit bearing kids.
And do you know, do they have their own transportation?
Yes, they get there themselves. Yep. They provide their own transportation. I mean, I don't know if they use the bussing system, Beverly, because the bus only goes to Paquonik, but kids do sometimes walk up the hill from Paquonik, so.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion on the floor. Did you want to restate your motion, or do we want to wait for Matthew?
I'll wait for Matthew.
In, in the lapse of Dean being here, I think I'm going to have to pose this question. It's $252,335, and you have a total of 58 attending. That's $4,344 per student. Is it going to cost $4,344 for them to go back and forth on the public bus? Is it that much that we're having spending? Is it, is that, is that the spending that is worth them getting their GED? I'm not saying that it's not. It's just something to consider. It's $4,300 versus an inconvenience of finding transportation.
And is public transportation free from Groton to New London?
That's a good question.
Do you know, Beverly, if public transportation is free in our, in our town?
I don't think so.
No, it's not?
I don't think it's free to go from Groton to New London.
Okay.
Not anymore. It was during COVID.
That's what I'm thinking. It was during COVID.
Would there be any program we could set up?
I don't know.
Another question, yeah? Question, time for answering questions.
Jay, can we break the motion up into two parts, into the adult ed part and the summer school part?
Well. Ian.
Jay?
Yep. I'm going to ask Ian if he wants to restate his motion. We can then amend that. But are you willing to split it into two motions?
Sure.
Because it is two line items.
Right.
Now, I'll make a motion that we rescind the proposed cut to summer school and restore the $252,335 to the budget.
Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Second.
Seconded by Adrian, motion by Ian. All those in favor?
This is the summer school, correct?
Summer school.
No. I said adult education.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Either way.
I'm sorry, adult education.
Adult education.
So that's one, two, three, four. Beverly?
No, I'm against it.
I'm still confused. I, I heard, I heard you say.
You did say summer.
I heard you say summer school.
Summer school, and then you gave the adult ed number.
Could you restate? Who, what should we?
Yeah, could you restate it?
I'll make a motion to restore the, the adult education line item for $252,335.
Second.
Adrian, seconds. Okay, all those in favor? One, two, three, four. Beverly?
No, my hand's not up.
Okay, just want to make sure.
My hand's not up either.
Abstentions?
Matthew, excuse me. Joan says no to the second motion?
I thought we'd just on the first motion now.
Restoring the mo, uh, money?
Joan, just for clarity, we were looking at the adult ed number at 252, 335, restoring that. And then Jay can tell you how many were for it and how many opposed.
May I ask a question? Am I allowed to ask a question while we're in the middle of a vote?
Yes.
Susan, is it possible to identify somebody who wants to sign up for a program so we can provide bus tickets? I'm really concerned about the transportation issue. If, if, if I can be assured that we can find out that we've.
We'd have to have money in the budget for that.
For the amount of money that we have in the budget, we are not be able to find bus tickets for kids?
Well, I mean, we'd have to set aside money in the budget. That's how budgets work.
I think we can find some in that 235. Like, how much is a bus ticket?
So I would, I would make a mo, mo, motion, I would move.
Hold on, we need to, we're still in the middle of a motion. We've taken a vote.
Then I'll vote.
By my, by my vote, it was four in favor, two opposed. You were opposed or abstentioned?
Opposed.
Two opposed.
On the post.
So three opposed. Okay, so now it's four, four. So that fails.
Matthew, can you make your motion, Matthew, that you were going to make?
No, now that that motion has, has, has passed, is that correct?
No, tie is a fail.
So I would, I would make a motion that we delete $250,000 from the adult education budget, which would leave us $2,335, which would be available for transportation costs for any Groton resident needing to go to New London.
I second.
I have no idea what that said.
I'll repeat that. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Andrea. The, the amount that we're, that we have in play is 252, 335. And I'm, I'm moving that we delete $250,000 and $250,000 from this line, which would leave us in the budget, three, $2,335, the purpose of which would be to help transportation for anybody, a Groton resident, to get to the New London services.
I'm just wondering how we. So that's Matthew.
Susan knows what my heart wants.
I do know what your heart wants. I'm just thinking, who's going to get those bus tickets?
I know. How are we going to administer that?
And how will I know if they're signing up for New London?
If you'd like, I'll buy you some tickets, and when you use them, you can pay me.
I know. It's just, I have to think about the personnel that's going to make sure that they're doing that job and, you know. It's a great, I think it's a great hearted thing to do, and it might provide more access.
Or maybe it's not bus tickets. Maybe it's Uber. Say that again. Maybe we, it's Uber instead of bus. It's going to cost a little bit more, but your house to New London High School, New London High School to their home. It may cost us a little bit more, but.
I don't think the 2,000 will last for long.
No.
Uber's going to be about 70 dollars.
They go to school like three days a week.
So then I amend my motion to make a $240,000 we will remove, and then we'll have adequate money. And if we don't spend it, the superintendent can reallocate it.
Not to put 2.5.
Life's complicated.
But it costs money to run a district.
It does cost money to run a district.
Yeah.
And do it right.
Yeah. And you can't be buying bus tickets. I'm sorry, Matthew, I love you.
I know you do. I love you too.
Can you imagine the, the public reaction that we, that we would get?
I would think that we, if we said we cut out almost a quarter of a million dollars to do something that's a rube gold bird, but it'll work.
Yeah.
Anyway, you can.
It's a good thought, though. I, I understand your thinking. I understand your compassion.
I haven't heard a second, so it looks like it's done.
Beverly.
Beverly's hand.
Did you not second?
Nah, I did. I seconded.
I thought.
Two times I seconded.
Nah, we've got it thirded, okay.
But you've amended the figure.
The $240,000.
Now you want to cut 240 from this, or you want to add back?
12,335.
12,335.
Right.
We'll see how people think about that, right?
All right. So all in favor of Matthew's motion, say aye.
I don't understand. What was his motion, Jay?
To add back.
He amended the motion.
Yeah, he amended it to add back 12,335.
They said that the 2,000 wouldn't be enough to take care of the transportation, so I made it a little bigger.
And you seconded the amendment. You seconded the motion, and then you seconded the amendment.
Yep.
And so are you now? Okay. All opposed. One, two, three, four opposed.
Five.
I'm sorry.
Did you oppose?
Well, no, it, we.
I was opposed.
Abstentions.
Abstention.
Okay.
Well, my wife has assured me the sun will rise in the east.
Yeah.
That's okay.
So, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Excuse me, Jay.
Yes.
How did Adrian and Ian vote?
So Adrian was opposed, and Ian abstained. Sorry, Joan, we're making.
Can we go back to taking it out?
There'd have to be a motion at this point.
I thought that they already voted on it. It was 50, 50.
The tie vote is a fail vote.
Yeah, that was a fail. All right.
And then the last one would be the reading.
Well, we wanted, what about the, you wanted to do the summer school, too?
Did we, oh, I'm sorry. I thought we got.
All right, so I'll, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to restore the summer school line item for $77,973.27.
Second.
So that motion was offered by Ian, seconded by Matthew. All in favor of adding back the $77,973.27 for summer school, please indicate by saying aye.
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 One, two, three, four, five.
Aye.
Oh, good, Beverly. Okay, good.
Opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? All right, so that passes.
Joan's going to need a roll call.
So Joan, that was, everyone voted aye except Rob.
He abstained.
No, I said no.
Am I correct, Robert?
I said nay. I'm opposed.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
Okay.
You think? All right. So I would like to make a motion to add $300,000 to the budget for the purpose of compliance with the right to read legislation.
Second.
That was offered by Adrian, seconded by Rob. So all in favor of the motion to add $300,000 to the budget to support the right to read legislation? Please indicate by saying aye.
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 One, two, three, four, five. Beverly?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. All opposed?
Can I say?
And abstentions?
When is the discussion? Because I'm told...
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't offer discussion. My mistake. Anybody want to discuss this?
I just want to say that we've been, and I will take responsibility for this, I've been dragging my feet on getting this to curriculum, and I think we have to make this a priority.
We agree.
I agree.
We had reached out too, this week, to make sure that we found time, you know, to get you in, but everybody's schedules are really busy, so...
I can't imagine.
No, everyone's, all of your schedules are really busy.
All right, so that passes. Do we want to continue with this scenario? Her document from tonight? Your next proposed reduction?
Yes, I would. This is a consultant that we no longer need. She was paid in the operation budget, and so we're taking it out at 22,000, it was. And then there were software that we know that we can remove, and we got, actually, we were able to make a deal, so we got one reduced just today. So, and that doesn't mean that we're not done looking for efficiencies, so using what you said, Ian, using that report, to see if you all see other things, and I can kind of look at it too with you, to see if there are other things that we can reduce. But for now, these are the reductions. So I guess if we get out a calculator and just figure out the difference between the 300,000 and the 252, whatever that number is, because I crossed it out, that's gonna be kind of the differential for what we find in that final proposal. So at least it'll give us something to stand up with, and then you all have to figure out if that's the number you want. You want to see if we can... Oh, okay.
I think Ian's ahead of me.
Ian, you're ahead of it.
The differential is 47,665.
Ian, I'm sorry, did you say that again?
The difference between the two numbers is 4, oh, sorry, 47,665.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So do you have a final number? Dave, do you want to put that in and do the...
Um...
Jen?
I thought we voted for summer school. It's 78,000.
We gotta add that in.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So we gotta add the 77,973 to that number.
But then that...
So the 252 just stays in. That doesn't affect the number.
Ian's gonna beat me by the time I pull this up and...
Okay, he's gonna get his spread.
You guys can figure the math out.
Yeah, figure the math out. I want you to make sure you figure the math out. I want to get it right, although it might not be the final answer.
It'll be about 210 somewhere.
So the only change is we're putting that 77,973 back in, plus another 300.
Yes. But we have to...
So that line becomes a net add of 18,000.
Yeah, we forgot about the figure.
I have a different figure.
37...
I should probably just leave it to the spreadsheet to figure out.
Yeah.
We've added back 377,973.27 comprised of the 300 plus the 77, minus the deductions of 283, 479, 27. We have increased the budget by $94,494.
Why are we...
Do you have your spreadsheet out?
The only thing we added was summer school and the 300,000.
That's right, but we had a total negative originally, we had a proposed reduction of 283.
Right.
But we added in, we added back 377.
Correct.
And that leaves, that means that we have a net increase to the budget of 94...
Or 94.
Or 94.
Okay.
That brings us grand total.
Ding 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 ding.
8.87.
Oh, it went up past the 8.76, huh? Aw, kinda like that number. So what was the final number of the budget?
No, it's going.
Eight?
That's staying in your reduction.
The number millions.
The change in millions?
No, just what would be the final answer for the total budget.
Could you repeat that? Would you be kind enough?
What's the percentage increase, Dave?
8.87, Bev.
Okay, so you all know as a board, the town council is not gonna go for the 8% increase.
Yep.
I hope you know that already. I mean, I spoke to some of them already, and they're not gonna go for that. So just to give you a heads up.
Right. And Beverly, that's why I suggested that we continue to study efficiencies before the number becomes final, before the bodies.
Jay?
So essentially, this is a placeholder budget.
Jen?
It's due on Wednesday. I'm not comfortable sending up, I know you're proposing sending up the 9 or the 8.76. Not comfortable. It appears irresponsible of us to submit that. And we've been, like, doing it for two months now, so...
I just would like to hear a justification of what is the right number, because I don't like the idea of just...
I presented...
Pointing it, yeah, but like 4.5, I don't really know exactly what the...
I presented something that was 6%. The only reason we're in this situation is because we're putting Esser funding, Esser positions back in. If we remove those Esser positions, give our staff the 3.5% increase, add back in the DOD, add back in...
We're not getting the DOD. Don't assume we're getting it.
No, I'm adding it to our budget because it's not part of our budget now, so I'm saying we're gonna, because the DOD was never part of this fiscal year '24 budget, so I'm giving them the right to, like, increase their budget by 500,000 in anticipation that we are not gonna get funding from the government.
These are all estimates that you have.
No, I know.
They're not real numbers that we have.
No, I know.
We have to use real numbers, that are contractual numbers, numbers that we know.
Yes, and like I said when I started, this is an estimate. Then fine, do a spreadsheet like this, because we haven't gotten or received anything that has walked us from '24 to '25. Use the real, use the real numbers.
Once again, we need this level of detail in order to get where we need to go.
We don't have it today.
There's macro cuts and there's micro cuts. We have to look at everything in that kind of detail. And, yeah, we've been at this for two months, and I asked for this level of rigor over a month ago.
I'm not...
It's been delayed and denied.
So...
Make a motion. Make a motion. Seriously.
I don't mean to be flip, but look at in this budget and tell me where the trip to Bermuda is. There's nothing in here that doesn't directly affect the education of all of our kids.
Well, then, I would say, and it's unfortunate, but whoever voted to allow us to hire for funds that we know that was gonna end, it was a finite, they made the mistake, and now we have to try to fix that. And unfortunately, Esser Grant is retiring our health benefit, it's the perfect storm, but if we don't fix it, we're just prolonging our agony until next year and the year after. So we need to take the hit, we need to do what's right. We didn't have some of these things beforehand, and we need to reset. And it's, yes, I know it's nice to have, but when we start to be able to get the funding and being able to identify, then we can rehire. Nothing ever says that we can't rehire. And it may be different people, but we can't compromise, you know, we just can't, we can't submit this to the town council. They're gonna, at least we have control on how we're gonna reduce. If they come back, they're gonna be like, you can only increase like 2 million, and that will put us even in the worst spot. If we do our due diligence and we show them, hey, as a board, we didn't just go with the 9%, but we really thought about it, and our best foot forward is 5%. Our teachers need the merit, you know, it's contractual. The buses are contractual. You know, the health benefits, that's unavoidable. And if they can see that and we can lay that out, we need to trust that the other volunteers in town council and RTM will appreciate that we did a good job, rather than just saying, I'm gonna put in 9% and we'll work down from it.
So the issue that I have is that because the Art Esser Grant is going away, doesn't mean that our student needs are going away. None of these staff members are doing nothing. They're all working, they're very hard to find quality employees. The numbers you're talking about, I know it's nice, it's very cold and calculated in a spreadsheet, but those all represent people. Some people who live in our town and other towns that have families.
I know, so that's what I...
And they're serving our students.
Two are social workers. We cannot lose two social workers.
And I know, but we should never have hired...
We absolutely needed to hire them. And I said, some positions would stay and some might have to move, and that's exactly what we did here.
And we agonized over it just like this.
Yep.
It's not that we just did it, we thought about it.
Yeah, a lot.
And we knew about Esser, but we also knew about the needs of the children.
I don't dispute what you're saying, Susan. Tell me, look me in the eye and tell me, do you really think the council's gonna accept this? And are we not risking by not cutting ourselves?
I think Jay's plan is a solid plan. I think we vote for a number that we think that we can work off, that we wouldn't have to raise, so I feel like we've got a solid number, and if we're able to find more efficiencies, Jen, we'll be bringing that. The book goes to John Burt, and, you know, they will have it, but we can, you know, I guess, is this a process? Did you talk to the mayor that we can submit something additionally afterwards, as long as it's less?
Well, the town council can go up or down. They can do whatever they want, but it has to be based on, in my opinion, information, data, and justification for why we need the money. We need to be able to justify. Jen?
If we're not willing to do it now, what's gonna say we're willing to do it two or three weeks from now? The only difference is somebody is sort of like forcing our hand.
Nobody's forcing your hand, Jen, I've given you a lot of information and my...
I'm not saying it, I'm just saying...
She's not talking about you.
I'm not talking about you. I'm talking about us gonna be reacting.
Okay.
Because now town council or RTM is telling us. So if we're not willing to do it now, like, the only reason, like, it will appear, like, the only reason we're doing it is because, like, the other town bodies told us.
Because we don't want it to be zero. Or we don't want it to be zero, which...
I don't want it to be zero. It is not fair.
But by voting no and not getting to a plan and wanting to wait a month, that's what we're gonna be.
You're gonna be zero.
We'll be at zero, yeah. And...
It's like we're tearing down Fenway because there's sunflower seeds in the bullpen.
And I think that this board can continue to work, to show why we need the increase we need. And we need to advocate for the children that won't be able to advocate for themselves that have these needs. And, yeah, the town council, if they don't feel that we are advocating for education, I mean, that is our job.
That is.
We are elected by the town, but we're an arm of the state to actually carry out their constitutional obligation to educate the children. So it's our job to advocate for their education, and if we abdicate that by just picking a number, that's why we need to do additional work to justify that that is the best number. And I am sorry for the artificial timeline that's, you know, that exists, you know, due to the budget process, but there is time to continue to talk about these important issues until the number is final.
So what assurances, I mean, what would the process look like on the other side of the vote? And what assurances do we have? Like, again, like, this level of detail is what I would like to see, and what the community deserves to see in the Board of Ed budget.
And I did discuss that that is a vision we have for the future. How much we can do between now and then, I don't know.
We have until the end of May.
Right, so I think we...
Tell me until the end of April for the town council to vote. We have to get something together by the end of April.
When will the town council take up the Board of Education budget? Do you know where?
Well, we could possibly appeal to them to do it last, to get us extra time, but that's it. We're depending on their grace. And that's not a good position to be in.
That's where we are.
Yeah. You know, and so, I mean, but I would be willing to go...
The town council is very familiar with the way we've done our budget. They, you know, they're very familiar, and they do a good job going through it and asking us questions. I've done this for 10 years with them.
Well...
Different councils, but they're very familiar with it.
I've never seen this level of detail come out of the Board of Ed.
Well, that's several different departments, we're just one of their departments. This is the whole town.
Right, but within the Board of Ed budget, there are a ton of object codes that all could be broken out to this level of detail, and they should be broken out to this level of detail. And the fact that they're not is problematic, and that's how we got to be where we are, is because we had no process to systematically go through the budget over the past two months.
We have had a process.
The process has not been effective.
Well, we tried to make it make sense to you.
You got me. I have no idea why you're saying it hasn't been effective. We have programs that are in place because they have proved to benefit children. You know, I know I've said this before, and you're probably not gonna want to hear it again, and I know it isn't budget, Beverly, but this is what I want to say, and that is, let's say that there's a vote coming in from Norfolk, and Mom and Dad are sitting at the table, and Mom says, geez, honey, let's look at how much Groton spends, I'd like to live there. And then Mom says to Dad, they just cut their budget by 9%, and they only spend $19,000 per child. Who's gonna come and live here, as wonderful a town as it is? Who would, every time I hear anybody talking about where to move, it's based on the school system. So this is a terrible image to put out there, and I'm saying what I have to say.
Beverly?
I just want to say, I've been on the board for 20 years and now another two years, and I've been doing this budget for years now. I never heard any complaints from a town council member or RTM member that they did not like the process. Now, you may not like the process, Ian, because you have millions of questions that you want the staff to answer, and take up lots of hours to answer all your questions, but I never heard any complaints about the process that we use on the Board of Education.
Well, I've heard lots of questions in the community, as far as to like how the spending is appropriated. as far as to like how the spending is appropriated and where it goes, and wanting to see more detail broken out. I spend a lot of time in the community. So, I mean, out there talking to people. That's what people wanna know.
And we've heard that, and that's why I made the proposal that I made.
And we all do, we all do. In the most of these stories, you run into people. So, we all do. You're not by yourself. We're hearing from the community, Ian, we all do.
So, what, what was the next item?
What next item?
The...
I think I went through them all.
So, I think we're at the 8.87.
8.87. Eighty-eight million, 742,603. No sense?
To Dave, you were gonna explain the software situation as far as the trans, the getting on the new system? What was the, what's our situation with that in regards to this number?
So, I, I looked at three options. One is, there's an integrated option right now within Power School. You know, we already have the suite, so we'd have to pay for some custom report writing and then some just implementation. I don't have a, I don't have a firm number for them, but let's, that's gonna be minimal. About $10,000, I think. But, you know, so the pros and cons, really quick, and I'll make this really quick. You know, it's integrated, right? So, the data's gonna flow. It just doesn't have the point and click capability. So, you know, you've gotta get into the ERP, and you've gotta go, you gotta know the account codes, those type of things. So, not bad, great integration, easy to move the data. But it's not gonna be like a community type of, or board type of application for you. So, the second one is a company called Allovue. I've used this in the past. They were just per, coincidentally, they were just purchased by Power School a couple of weeks ago or so, three weeks or so ago. Previously, I paid, I think it was $99,000 for implementation.
Is that based on the size of the district?
I was just gonna say, obviously, the district is five or six times the size of this one. I have a call scheduled with them, because apparently they have some new capabilities coming out. That, that's a little more like your iPhone, if you think about it that way. Very easy to get into, very user-friendly. And even has the capabilities of expense management on, on top of the budget. So, it has, it's a lot of integration. I think they'll integrate now with Power School. So, from that perspective, maybe the data transfer per se wouldn't be that complicated for us. And it's more, it's more of a, a front end, right? So, you, you go right in, let's say you wanna see code one, you just go right into code one. You can put what-if scenarios in there. You can drill, you can, a lot of modeling type of capabilities and something like that. And if you look it up online...
How do you spell that?
A-L-L-O-V-U-E.
A-L-L-O-V-U-E?
Yep. So, then there's a third one. And I don't have much data on this, but it's, it's kind of intriguing. And I think Jay mentioned this maybe the last meeting. It's called something like Open Gov. So, if you look at the state website, they have something that's called, don't quote me exactly, but it's, it's something like open checkbook per se, right?
Yeah.
It's an AI type of capability, allows you to go in, and, and really, you just, you know, if you think of sort of a canvas, right? You could just go in and just search and, and find your way through just about any aspect of, if you think about the checkbook, a checkbook. So, for us, from the terms of expenditures and revenue, it would be kinda neat. I think it's, you know, the AI thing is kind of the new thing. I just don't have a whole, I read about it, I don't have a whole lot of data. I did put a request in for a demo and some contact information. So, I don't know how much that would cost. I imagine it would be kind of like a platform for us, something different, right? But, you know, with AI, right, you'd be able to expand, and really, it would be sort of a, a journey in terms of an implementation, meaning you could put expenditures in, you could put your budget in, you should be able to do all sorts of integrated analysis. What I don't know, Ian, is, is something like that, 'cause I don't know the technology that well, is what's the front end look like, right? So, is it just kind of, does it just kind of sit on our site? Or is there something that's maybe a use, a little more user-friendly for us? So, it's, it's easier to kind of grab the data, you know?
Okay.
Oh, sorry, Clint, yep.
If I may, just to add some flavor to that, I looked into the open checkbook stuff too, which is an open, it's built on an open source platform. Thank you, Ian. It is very similar to, there's very few K-12 districts that I could find, too, actually, in my extensive Google searching. But it is very similar in part to what was discussed last night, as it is a logical structure of PDF files. Most of them have by-code, full, full sheets and so forth that are searchable PDFs. They're not spreadsheets, they're not open and closed, but there is that. So, that is something we should continue to look into, 'cause I think it may be able to address that need that was stated last night, as well as the ongoing budget design that people are asking for.
You're talking about what Jay had said.
Correct.
About having a repository.
And I'm cautiously optimistic, 'cause it is built on an open source platform. So, hopefully, we do, I couldn't find pricing anywhere. Mostly state governments, they're doing this with a handful of municipalities.
So, one more, if you... There's a company out there, you might have heard, it's a data analytics company. They got a software, it's called Tableau, right? It's been around for, it was hot maybe five, six, 10 years ago, I'm not quite sure. But, very interesting, a lot, a lot of capabilities around data storage, data manipulation, a lot of dashboard type of things, interactive dashboards. So, you know, just if you think about the, the spectrum of capabilities, you know, it wouldn't be sort of your iPhone point and click, but it would certainly be an interactive dashboard that you could, you know, write custom reports and write sort of, any sort of data analytic queries that you like. But that would give you certainly more power in terms of the data storage. So, I'm thinking, you know, five, 10 years of data, that kind of stuff. And I don't, I didn't look at the price of that, quite honestly, just 'cause I thought, you know, it's just, it's just a little bit off the spectrum. It's, it's quite interesting. You usually take those things, you layer it on, layer it on top of a warehouse. So, I almost feel like we need the, the warehouse and the data first, and then layer that on top.
Right. So, and what was the software that you used up in Hartford?
Allovue.
That was Allovue?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was their early stages, so I'm, I'm really, really, I'm just curious anyways, but I'm just kind of interested to see how they've expanded.
And how would that work with, last night, who's mentioned that currently the financial software does not communicate with the HR software? Is this something that we could remedy with this purchase?
Yep, so there's, there's a bridge. So, there's, the first I mentioned, the, the really good thing, as I mentioned, is they're, they're gonna be integrated with Power School, right? So, that's, that's where our ERP is, that's where our ledger is. So, when I was talking earlier about maybe getting some data transfer help, may not need that if it's all integrated in that suite, right? But there's sort of a bridge that we need to work on between Lori and I, and hopefully, we'll do it this summer. It's, it's just trying to get our, all of our HR payroll personnel-type data in a structured environment in one of these ERPs or a bridge tool for that ERP. And then that allows us then to have all the business controls, all the workflows, and then that flows right into it.
And is that current, that's a current priority?
So, we, yeah, so we, we actually have the, I don't know if it's the right word, Clint can correct me, but sort of the subscription for that capability within Power School. We need about $9,000, I think it was, for professional services to get this thing up and running, just to lift it live, you know?
I'm sorry, what was that number again?
9,000.
9,000.
I already have a quote on that one.
All right. Then, now, I'm sorry, that was the Power School option? Or is that...
Yeah, well, that's the, you know, so, there's quarter, sort of phases, right? So, if you think of phase one, we've gotta get sort of this people data aggregated, so we talk to one another, but it's in a centralized spot. And that's, that's the, that's the piece. We already have the subscription for. We just need, we just need the professional services to get this thing up.
Okay.
So, that would be a first step?
That's the first step, yep.
Now, is HR already using a component within Power School?
Yeah, so let me provide just a little bit of clarification. When we talk about the HR systems that we use, those are HRIS systems that are primarily designed to interface with the employee. So, the systems that we're using are employee-facing. The systems that Dave is talking about are the backend part of the process, the payroll processing, the position control, and those types of things. You know, for example, our position control right now is in a spreadsheet format, and that's what he's talking about, is getting that online into the payroll system so that we can share that data across our groups. But the HR systems will still remain because they're employee-facing. So, just to provide some clarity.
So, you're just trying to get the backends to communicate?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so think about, you know, teacher moves to school tomorrow. We just wanna make sure from the time they move up front, that the backend, all the coding functions, objects that you see here are all integrated. Today, it kind of goes from a spreadsheet to another spreadsheet.
Right.
And if, I'm, I'm sorry, if I could just add a little bit more color. All the systems are connected right now. We have HR, we have finance, and we have student information system, which is also teachers and courses and schedules. Both finance and the student information system are first-class citizens under Power School, so the plumbing together is a first-class citizen. There's an easy handshake there. HR is, is owned by a separate company, so there's a more manual process. They are connected, we're trying to streamline that, in essence.
Right.
Is that, is that helpful?
So, yeah, that's very helpful. Andrea, I have a question.
I just have a, a question of clarification. I'm not sure that I heard this right. Did I hear you say that, that what you're talking about now was, was popular 10 years ago?
No, I just mentioned, you know, dashboarding, Tableau, which is a software data analytics company with dashboarding, that was popular maybe even more than 10 years ago. But it's still around. It's, it's a very prevalent tool, it's very user-friendly. But it's, it's a different capture than what we're talking about in terms of point and click, data entry, drill-down capabilities. This is more on your desktop, you push it, you press your finger on it, and it's a dashboard.
Are you seeing other things that might work even better?
Well, that's my question, why would we buy something that...
I'm just giving them options. He wanted four or five, I'm giving him four.
Right, and, and it sounds, I'm sorry. It sounds like Allovue or Power School is probably the, the more user-friendly.
I just think, you know, something that integrates with Power School a little easier. So, we're just, we're not in this, you know, we're back, we're, I, I just don't wanna be back to this, you know, we got overnight transfers and that kind of stuff. I'd rather have real time.
Yeah.
You know, so I'd rather be able to be able, like, right now, we should be in a budget meeting, we should be able to pull this up and, and just zoom right through this thing.
Right.
You know, with some of the other ones, when it's not integrated, right? You might have the overnight feeds, and I, and I'm just trying to stay out of that, that's all.
So, which one do you think would be the best for that?
Well, I, I mean, I, I don't wanna lean on Allovue just 'cause I use it, and I'd love to see their capabilities. I just think the, the powers, the core Power School one is, is not gonna give you that
It's real-time, dynamic.
Wait-and-click type of thing. I think it's really good for basic districts, holds the data really good. It's not a analytics type of tool.
Right, that the Allovue is built for analytics.
I think, I think Allovue, and then I think, you know, sort of this AI, open con, open checkbook concept is really intriguing.
And, but, yeah, so Allovue, rough estimates, about $100,000?
That's what it was, yep.
And Open Gov is unknown at this point.
I'm just not sure about that. I've looked, I just, like I said, I put the request in, I just haven't heard anything back.
Okay.
You know, but both of them, I find them both pretty intriguing.
And so, we have, is it, it would be a two-phase project as far as like, first phase would be like a, you said, about a $9,000 startup to get the ERP?
Yeah, well, the good, the good part of that, like, we already have the capability. We just need to get the data integrated and, and pushed up. And it's kind of what Clint was saying.
To be clear, ERP, what does that stand for?
It's, it's, you know, Enterprise Resource Plan, it's sort of your ledger, you know?
Gotcha. All right, I just, yeah, a lot of acronyms, so I just wanna educate myself.
We should just get that, we should just get that data clean first, right, before we take it somewhere.
Right, yeah. So, so that would happen first, and then we would implement the software of our choice on top of that?
Yep.
And that would be our access point to basically building a box, getting the box sorted out, and then something on top of the box that we can reach.
You got it.
This is probably a premature question, but do you have any idea on timeline for implementation? We're looking at four months, five months? Where, and you could reasonably say you don't know yet, that's...
No, 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 you know, it's, you know, what I don't know is the, is the first phase, just 'cause it's, I just haven't been through that. It's been a long time going through that. You know, the other side that, you know, I used to, I'm very familiar with the data analytics side. So, I'm just thinking, if we get the data clean, and it's already in our core system, it's gonna be uploading, testing, report writing. That should not take us too long. That's, that's probably, you're probably in that right range, 90, 120 days type of thing, depending on, you know, depends on how complicated you wanna get it coming out of the gate, too, you know? To me, you kind of work through these things, and they become evolutions for you. You get it up and running, you, you learn, you, you beat on it a little bit, and then you keep expanding.
And so, those numbers, are they calculated into this latest...
They're, they're nowhere, 'cause I owed you some of that feedback, yeah.
Okay. So, for just a ballpark figure, sort of a placeholder figure, we'd be looking at about $110,000 to $115,000? Between the startup, the, the bridge building, and then possibly the Allovue as the, the upper end of the interface?
Yeah, but I mean, I think that's...
Or the Open Gov might be...
And I think that's a great, a great starting point, for sure.
Okay.
Is that something maybe we could take care of this year, if we look at that DOD again?
Well, I want, I wanna take care of the first phase with, you know, the position control.
Okay.
Because it's, it's just gonna take us a little time, and that's the piece that, once we get that right, then the data's good. So, we need to spend a little more time on that. So, the sooner we can start on that, the better.
All right. So, we would need to put that money in to make sure that we have it set aside?
You're, you're correct, yeah.
Okay, so...
Like I said, I, I didn't wanna get in front of it, I wanted to make sure I explained it to you first.
Yeah, no, I got it, and I appreciate the detail, and I got it, I got a clear understanding of it now. So, thank you for that. So, I'll make a motion to add $115,000 for software improvement and upgrade, or software transition and upgrade.
Unless you think we can do that through DODA or DOD?
All right.
It's hard to say.
I, I just can't answer tonight, I, I need a little more time on that one, you know?
All right, so we have a motion on the floor?
I'll second it, so we can...
Okay, any discussion?
I just think it's, it's a necessary investment, given, you know, the number of roadblocks that we've hit, you know, and difficulties that we've had as far as like looking at analytics. While it's an initial investment now, and it's an out, an output now, I think the dividends that it stands to, to, to bring back to us in the future will far outweigh the initial investment.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I was, I was just gonna say, I would ask, what efficiency in your office might that add? Because I'm assuming having a software suite like that will make things easier, go smoother. Do you, do you feel like it's gonna be a substantial time savings for, for your office, having something like that?
Well, let me, let me answer it two ways. So, one is just on the budget process. If you've seen me walk in at night and how painful it's been going through an Excel document, and I'm not, and I'm not being sarcastic, but what happens with some of these, you, you integrate your budget books right into the software.
Yeah.
So, as we're making changes, the budget books are ready to go immediately. So, I'm just thinking about like, from the start of implementation all the way through the budget process in terms of making changes, printing out new materials, you, you do what-if scenarios. It's, it's an interactive type software, right? So, you kind of make it, so for, just for me personally, it would, it would be tremendous, 'cause everything's been very manual this year. Some of these, again, the AI and some of the Allovue, they take it a step further, where they start to get into expense analytics. So, I know you've had some questions about certain object codes. You, you just pull it up and you, I wouldn't have to, I wouldn't even have to answer the question for you. You just kind of pull it up, and you can self-serve going through that yourself. What I don't know, Adrian, which is probably the better point, which is, what does it do from a, you know, end-to-end workflow process standpoint? I just gotta think, I'd have to just think through that a little bit in terms of, you know, requisition processing, payments, that kind of stuff, you know?
Yeah. My question is mostly just to, to say is that the software is more, it, it does more than just serve our purposes. It will serve your purposes as well in the district and keeping track of things.
Oh, yeah, you know, if we, if we integrate through the, the expense side of it, Oh, yeah, you know, if we integrate through the expense side of it, it'd be tremendous, because today we go through the ERP for all of our reviews, our, you know, I think I told you, you know, going in, trying to find invoices, printing those things out, that stuff would be right at the fingertips. We'd still need to do things differently for the audit, but just think about a typical day, you know, it would just, it would speed up that integration and the understanding. Very, very, very cool.
So it's a substantial modernization that we are due for?
Absolutely.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Make a comment?
Andrea, and then Jen.
I just wanted to thank Ian for bringing that motion forth. It does so much more for us as a district. I would never want us to look like we were making educational decisions in fear. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Jen?
I think, like, a town our size should be running a whole budget process on Excel.
Mm-hmm. Agreed.
Probably should have been disclosed to me before I came.
I know, we didn't tell, we didn't do that in the interview process, otherwise he might not have known.
We wouldn't know you. We've never met you.
What I hear is that we need to make a strategic choice, and perhaps I'm wrong. On the one hand, one could argue that the town council and the RTM, at least the education committee, have given us marching orders and told us to cut ourselves, or they will cut for us, I'm being pretty blunt. And the other choi, and so the risk is that we don't have any assurance, and I don't think you can give us assurance, that we can find other cuts to offset all the money we're adding in now. And the other choice is to ask for what we need, let it play out, with the risks that that entails. Unless I hear something to really convince me one way or the other, it's a dilemma, I'm going to abstain, and I understand that's equal to a no vote. But I'm not smart enough to know which is the best strategic choice. If you see, if any of you sees a third strategic way of approaching it, I'd like to hear it, but that's what I hear us having to face. If I wasn't clear, ask me to try to clarify.
I don't see a third way. I see that's the second way that you put forth, and that is, this isn't what we need, we have done everything due diligence, and let the town council and the RTM cut the budget for the children, let them do it. We've done everything that we can.
Then in that case, I would offer another idea. If that's the route, we go.
I don't mean to cut you off, but is this motion still, this motion still up, right?
Yeah.
Yes, this is just the discussion.
This is just for the $115,000 to put in for the software transfer process?
I understand, I understand. But the, from my perspective, that's a subset of the strategic choice. So, if we do go with the second one, and say everything that we need, and let it play out, one of the ways I think we can help strengthen our argument is, I mentioned to Phil, and he's going to think about it, and it may be a good idea or not, but in our communication plan, one of the strategies, and remember, it was an aspirational plan, we laid out a lot of things more, I'm on the budget, I'm right on this.
We have to stick to this item, please, we're discussing the motion.
Well, then I'll just, I'll abstain and ask if I can speak later. Thank you.
So, Rob?
So, I think it's incredibly beneficial for administration especially, but my only question to this is, how does it affect the kids? Is it something that's going to affect them on their daily, or is it something that's just going to make administrations' lives easier? And when we're trying to cut down money, and we just cut things like summer school, and I realize that was a no vote on that, are we really wanting to put more in for something, and is it worth putting in for the children?
I would respond to that by saying that, yeah, I believe it would ultimately be a benefit for the students, because it would better enable the administration and the board to work together in a collaborative fashion to find more efficiencies, you know, and in a more dynamic, rigorous way, you know, like, and that would free up money within the grants that we have, that could free up money in other parts of the budget that could be redirected to, you know, on-the-ground supports for the students, long-term.
If utilized effectively, correct?
Right, and that's where we all come in as a collaborative group, you know, staff and board together.
Perfect, thank you, Ian.
And what I've heard this board say is they want more information, more data. Right now, it's in a format we can't...
It's very complex.
Yeah, we can't access. And this will allow us to be able to drill in and actually see and do the due diligence.
Agreed.
And maybe, Matthew, this, you know, with the process that, you know, Jay has suggested, that there's still opportunities to find other efficiencies, so this is, you know...
And also, sorry.
There is the opportunity, there's also the risk, and I'm not smart enough to know the risk-opportunity, the opportunity-risk delineation. So, I said I would hold off to the, if the board votes this, I will support it with all my heart, and I will suggest ways that I think we can help us achieve it, but I don't think we can ignore the risk.
Matthew, to your point, I understand the concern, and I think this would, you know, having this as part of our budget, combined with, you know, Jay's proposal as far as we continue to refine and drill down and try to find further adjustments we can make over the next month or two, but having this software transfer in the budget as a stated priority of most urgent necessity, that gives us a strong point of contention to say, to defend what we're doing here, to say that, yeah, no, we got this problem that we can't fully assess everything we need to assess, you know, but this tool will enable us to save better, more effectively, you know, in a more dynamic fashion over the long term, moving forward in the future.
I get it.
So it would give me an ability, as a board member, you know, if I'm going to advocate for the budget, this gives me a strong position of advocacy.
We have advocated, Susan advocated very, very well. It wasn't as persuasive as we wanted it to be, so I will support it. I'm going to abstain at this point.
Okay. Any other discussion about upgrading the district financial software?
Sorry, just a question. I'm in support of it. I'm just, what does the town use? Why are they able to get that book, and we can't? Like, what's the town using?
I mean, I know they use Munus for their ledger, I'm not sure if they use anything for kind of report writing, or some of the, I just haven't seen the book, quite frankly.
I haven't either, that's why I was just wondering.
Would you check out with them and see? I've used Munus before, but it's not, it's an accounting software, I'm not sure what they use for this type of stuff.
Well, I have, like, the last few, many years of budget books, so I'll gladly share them with you all, if you want to check them out, you know. Never mind the little chicken scratches in the corners, and the post-it notes everywhere.
Do you remember what system they use?
No, no, I never, I never...
It was a proposal years ago to upgrade millions of dollars, and I don't know if they ever did that, so...
I know, all I know is that I find this to be a very comprehensive process, and, you know, despite however the votes come out, you know, throughout the process, you know, obviously the record will show, I've not been on the winning side of many of them, but it still felt very thorough and comprehensive, and it was a very organized approach, and I felt it empowered the bodies, you know, both the council and the RTM, to go through the budget in a very systematic, organized, methodical fashion, where, you know, we knew what object codes we were going to be handling on any given meeting, we could prepare for those, and then, you know, we had all the breakouts, we had the narratives coming from the department heads, we could see what the initial ask was, we could see what the manager's adjusted amount was, recommended amount was, you know, we had the department heads there on the night of, that we're going to discuss the object code, we could ask questions, and once the question ceased, then we could, you know, move numbers. And then we voted, and recessed the cow, or recessed the meeting until the next day, and then it was only at the end of, like, that month-long process that there would be a motion to accept the budget as amended. And then, even then, if somebody still wanted to revisit one of the object codes, they could make a, then make a motion at that time, even at the end, to drop back into another part and say, okay, well, you know, I just want to reconsider this number, you know, before we close out the budget. And so, you know, you got about, you know, two swings at the ball, you know, and I thought it was a very fair and transparent process, you know, in my time on the RTM, and I would really like to see the Board of Ed kind of move in that direction in the future.
All right, is there any other discussion on upgrading the district financial software? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Were you, okay. So five?
Oh, I was, I said aye.
Okay, I'm sorry.
What about Beverly?
Opposed? Any abstentions?
One, here.
What did Beverly do?
Beverly, what was your vote on that?
I'm aye.
Okay, so that motion passes.
Would this be an appropriate time to share a, moving that forward?
Well, we're, we're in, as long as it's directly related to the budget.
I'll wait, I'll wait.
But you can certainly send us an email.
I will certainly send you an email.
ECCS.
Do we have a final number and a final percent now?
It was 115, you said?
You're asking for real-time in Excel.
See, if we had this software, Dave could put it up on the big screen.
9.01 instead of 9.1.
It's exactly, almost exactly to the number that Ian mentioned earlier.
It was close to my 125.
You called it early, you called nine earlier.
I did, I did, yeah.
Excuse me. Jay, what is the budget number for the 9.01?
I got to see it here, Joe, I'm sorry, it's been a late night.
Thank you, sir.
You got it.
So...
Move, moving forward, no, I'm not, moving forward, when we continue to drill down on this budget, can we get some firm numbers on the consultants?
We will work on those consultants. There's not a lot of them, but we'll find them.
I just want to know.
So my, my thought, and you can all agree or disagree, when we come to that point, is that we come up with a list of everything we need. I think at the first meeting, we say, this is what we need. Case loads, you know, whatever, somebody, you know, whatever data people say they need to analyze the budget. And then, we get that data brought in, and so if we, as a board, you know, all decide that that is the, the data that we need, then we go forward. Keeping in mind that it is going to be a burden, you know, on staff where data has to be compiled, if it's not available instantly, you know, we have to take into account that this, you know, could involve either overtime, or somebody's other job not getting...
Taken away overtime, it's not in the budget this year.
You know, we do have to be mindful of what this kind of data collection is going to be, and, you know, what's reasonable.
And please look at the frequently asked questions, make sure the links are working and that we've got everything, because that is a good document. You guys have put together a lot of time and energy, my staff has really responded, and so take a look at those questions you've already asked, because they may be enlightening to you, you know, they might give you some guidance.
I do, I do appreciate it. I found the links for the survey and the audit, so thank you for putting those in there. And also Attachment 10 that I asked about last night, that was corrected today, so thank you for all that.
Yeah.
And we did receive, did everybody receive the, I haven't studied it, but the partnership plan data has been shared. There is word that Anthem may be adjusting the amount of their insurance projections slightly, but I don't have the...
I did have a question about that. I saw the document, too, so I also want to, you know, thank everyone that was involved in getting that forwarded to us. There was a note in that document that said something about the state covering the 7% increase? There's like a little footnote.
Well, yeah, maybe Laurie can speak to that.
At the time that the projection was put together, the state had not published their rates for 7.124, so they indicated to our consultant to use a 7% increase on the 2023 rates. So that was included in that projection.
Okay.
But like the shifting sands of the state budget, it hasn't been set. It's a placeholder. Everything's a placeholder.
$1,200 plus a month, maybe 13 a month. Ask me how I know.
Any other comments, questions? Does, does everybody agree that moving a number and then forming a committee, or discussing in committee to the whole, is a good way to go forward and make sure that we've done our due diligence?
I'd like to see a committee, an ad hoc, and then to bring it, that committee to bring it to us.
I think we have a finance committee already.
Yeah, I just, I just don't know if the constraint of three people is going to give us the breadth of...
I'm not saying not to bring it to the COW.
Yeah, yeah.
I would rather.
Okay.
I think, I think for the sake of time, we might as well just bring it right to the COW.
Right, because to wait for them to come up, report, and transmit it, I think we just work in budget work sessions, but we do need to start our COW, you know, we do have a board calendar that we need to follow to review data and that sort of thing, so we need to start meeting.
Are we considering adding an additional COW meeting for a couple of months, or every other month, so that we can do, I know we have two, so that we can do the business that we do on the two?
Well, I think we can look at the template and see how we can work through that. I mean, we used to adjust it all the time, so I think we can compact it. I think this is more important to pay attention to right now.
I think it's a large priority, so I would appreciate, yeah, you know, let's, we have to, you know, show good faith effort that we are trying to put the number down, so that, and I also would say that maybe we should consider asking, and maybe it's a board action that we would have to issue through you, you know, that we ask that the town council, you know, consider our budget item later in the month.
Well, I'd have to look at, I don't know what it is right now.
I think it's the 27th and 28th, the public hearing, and then the town council, of March.
And then the town council starts their deliberations in April?
That's what I believe, yeah.
And, but they, have they issued their calendar?
Is that right? The deliberations in April? Yeah.
I'm not sure where Board of Ed falls in that potential, but Ian is saying it is maybe asking to maybe put you guys towards the end.
Yeah. I got it.
Yeah, I can certainly...
So, I mean, do we want to take a vote on that, so that you have the full power of the board behind you when you make that request?
Sure, we'll entertain a motion to request that the town council rearrange their budget review calendar to consider us last.
So moved?
Second.
Seconded by Andrea. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor? Okay, so that's unanimous? So I will make those inquiries as to how that is, I, you know, I don't know how flexible they can be with it, but we can certainly ask, give us a little more time.
Appreciate it.
All right, is there anything else? I really appreciate everybody, especially the staff, for these additional, we've added three additional meetings in the past two weeks. I don't know whether it's, there's anything we can actually do tomorrow, this room is not available due to the equipment being at Fitch, and also no staffing, so I just don't know... just don't know if there's anything else that we can actually do.
Midsummer Murders is on, too.
Oh. There's a conflict there.
Not to mention Death in Paradise.
And your taxes.
Did you get, did you get that, Joan? Death in Paradise.
And a school play.
And, and poor Joan. She's stayed with us the whole time.
So am I to understand that the, that on Monday we are going to take up the figure that we've had as a baseline, subject to any members' amendments?
That's what I would suggest.
Okay.
And then it's the will of the board.
Will of the board.
What's the will? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I love you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Mrs. Johnson?